Good morning and welcome to the August 6, 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting. As customary, we're going to rise for a moment of silence. This time, we're going to dedicate the moment of silence to those men, women, and children who have lost their lives in the last couple of weeks in the United States to tragic mass shootings. Three killed in Gilroy, 22 killed in El Paso, and nine killed in Dayton. Supervisor Simon, can you please put this in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda, is there any extra items? Five, approval of consent agenda. Consent agenda are items that are seen as non-controversial and can be moved by one motion unless someone from the board wishes to pull an item for further clarification. So far, I've had 5.10 to be pulled for next week, and it will be a timed item. Do we have a time for that maybe? 9:30, so 9:30 next week, 5.10. Any other items to be pulled from the board? Any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, let me add the motion to approve consent agenda items number 5.1 through 5.9, and then 5.11 through 5.14.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're early for our public input, so we'll go to calendars. Supervisor Sabatier?
All right. So later today, I will be at Highlands Park. At 5:30, they're doing the National Night Out in Clear Lake, so I'll be out there, and hopefully, many from the community will show up, get to meet your local law enforcement. I'm sure that there will be also some local firefighters there as well, bouncy house music, I'll be the DJ actually, food, and just get to know the people that are serving your community, get to know the people in your community. I think it'll be a fun time, and we've had fun the last couple of years when we've done it. Tomorrow, I have an APC, Lake Transit Authority, meeting, and in the afternoon, I'm going to be meeting with some potential candidates for next year's city council election. And on Thursday, I believe we will be meeting with Brock Falkenberg, myself and Supervisor Scott. That at least is on my calendar, I'm not 100% sure if that's still happening. And then on Friday, I will be celebrating my birthday.
What time is that meeting? Because I don't have it on my calendar.
I believe it's at 9 o'clock.
Okay.
And then I'll be back here on Monday as well, and I'm meeting with Lake County Broadband Solutions and getting prepared for our Thursday, our Tuesday, meeting on the 13th.
Supervisor Simon?
All right. This afternoon, I have a ad hoc committee meeting about the vehicle policy, vehicle taking policy this afternoon with Rob and Carol, and also Sheriff Martin, DA. And tomorrow, I have Lake Transit Authority Area Planning Council here in Lakeport at the City Hall. In the afternoon, we'll be back down in my district, returning phone calls and, you know, following up on a couple of calls that have already happened this week with constituents down in my area. Space Committee meeting on Thursday morning here at the courthouse, and then math later on that evening down in Middletown. Friday, we'll not have office hours this week, football season has started, so I'll be out on the practice field Friday morning. Don't have anything on Saturday. 4 o'clock on Sunday, the Methodist Church in Lower Lake will be doing a groundbreaking ceremony, I will be speaking there for a few minutes, but happy to see that project moving forward and being rebuilt. Monday, back here in the office, and then Tuesday, back for the meeting on the 13th.
Supervisor Brown?
So I have the meeting that Moke referenced regarding the vehicle policy, did Susan ever respond?
She has not answered the Outlook meeting request.
Okay. So, so far, it'll just be with Sheriff then. Okay. And that's going to be just whenever we get finished up, or is that, is that at 1:30?
We set it at 2:00.
2:00, okay. Yeah. All right, that sounds good. And then beyond that, I have the rest of the afternoon and tomorrow morning that I'm working on the cleanup, road cleanup project on Soda Bay Road, and fire extinguisher giveaway program is pretty much set, so we're just waiting for those to be delivered, which will be the same weekend. The board's familiar with, with the programs, the both programs?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So if you have anybody from the fire extinguisher giveaway, well, actually, both of them are open to all residents of the county. I've even had some people from Ukiah call about fire extinguishers, but I've told them that, you know, it's basically to the Lake County folks, and anyone, anyone out there, anywhere in the county is welcome to come and get one, so.
And when is that, so the public knows?
Okay, so, so here's the deal, the cleanup from Point Lakeview Road to Riviera Heights Drive, and is it okay if I take a couple of minutes to-
This is reporting out, so yeah.
Describe it, okay.
This is a great time to get the information.
Because it's about six miles of roadway, but, you know, I've been out there, and I've ridden my bike on it, I've wheel-walked it, I've done everything, and it's about 26,000 feet, which comes out to, if we have 500 people, they do 50-foot each, and we're done. Well, since then, BLM stepped in to do the Black Forest, so that takes up about 6,000 feet of it. So we've minimized that down. So it's really doable, it's a big job, but it's really doable to go in there and clean the uphill side of that road all the way to Bergerson Road in Soda Bay. And each of the four neighborhoods, actually five, Canockdy Bay is not a homeowners association, but it's a, it is a neighborhood with, with a group of people that are interested in helping, so there's actually five locations there that, that people will be participating in, and then folks from all over the county have indicated that they're coming over. And we'll, originally, we were going to go to the Riviera School, and the buses were going to shuttle people out there, but then we decided we would close that lane of traffic so people could work safely, and they can park there now, so we're encouraging people to just drive right straight out there. There'll be somebody at the end of the road that can tell them what, which, which area that they can be working in, they'll be designated with signs. So, and then those folks, anyone that's interested in the fire extinguisher giveaway, we're giving away a little over 500 fire extinguishers on the following day at the Riviera School. They're the big ones, they're the two-and-a-half gallon water filled, and then the five-pound ABC, they're a little bit lighter to carry, so some people might not want the big 40-pound water, water filled. So we're giving those away, but the people that come to the cleanup, if they want a fire extinguisher, they get a voucher, so they're automatically guaranteed one.
Thanks.
That's something that we've added to it, because we had a lot of people that wanted to do that, and so if you come do the cleanup, you get a voucher, you're automatically going to get a fire extinguisher. So we're encouraging people to participate in both. It's the fire extinguisher giveaway, the cleanup is from 6:00 to 10:00 on the 17th, and, and the, the fire extinguisher giveaway is at 9:00 on the, on the 18th, the following day, at the Riviera Elementary School. And Kelseyville Fire will be there to give training on how to use those fire extinguishers. There's, it's not just as easy as just shooting it.
Yeah.
A lot of people will take the chemical filled and, and spray it ahead of the fire, thinking that'll stop it like fire retardant, it doesn't, it burns right through it, so you gotta put it right on the fire. So they're going to show them how to do that, and they'll actually have a bunch of used fire extinguishers that they can, people can actually use on it to figure it out. So, so I'm kind of excited about that. The high is supposed to be 90 that day, so it should be like 80 by the time we get finished, so it's going to be a nice, cool day, it's very shady in that area with the, with that area over there, so I think it's going to be really good. Come out and work for an hour, come out and work for all four hours, doesn't make any difference. Highway Patrol will be at both ends monitoring traffic. The road department, Public Works, is going to be out there with their equipment, picking up all the brush and, and everything as we go. As I said, BLM is working with Cal Fire, they were out there yesterday, they're going to be out there for two weeks in the Black Forest cleaning up all the slash and everything in that area, and they're, they're doing an amazing job. So we've got, we've got a lot of support from a lot of folks to get this thing cleaned up, and, and as you guys know, anybody that's been out there, I mean, even if you haven't, it's obvious, from anywhere in the, on that side of the lake, you can see how volatile that area is and how, you know, 12,000 people are exposed to significant risk because of the, the fire danger over there. So clean that up alongside the road will minimize that risk, so that's what we're, that's what we've got going on.
And I'd like to apologize in advance that I won't be there, because I'm dropping a child off to college, so.
Yeah. No, me either, yeah.
So I do have a question.
So there'd be 400, or 998 hands?
We just added a foot to what we all have to do now.
Yeah.
There's a, like a volunteer signature page that needs to be submitted. If people want to submit that early, can they send that to your email?
They can, and so here's the other thing with that, they can print it off or, and send it in, they can bring it with them, or we'll have them there. I have, I have seven, seven areas that are broken down, and I have volunteer coordinators that are going to be in each one of those areas, they'll have those forms, we're providing water, we're having, we all provide gasoline mixed with oil for the weed eaters if people need that. We'll have some gloves out there for people if they don't have, we're encouraging them to bring their own, but we'll also have those forms available. And Kelseyville Fire will be monitoring and patrolling the area with medics in case anybody, you know, bee sting or fall or anything like that, and, and so we've got all that covered with, and with those forms as well.
Awesome.
Great.
So, okay.
Anything further on your calendar?
That's pretty much it.
That's a lot of work.
For the next two weeks, that's about all I'll be doing.
Follow that.
Yeah.
Good work on that.
Supervisor Crandall?
So today, following this meeting, I have a meeting with the constituent Lasern to talk about a project he wants to work on for mental health, I'm pretty sure, or something like that. I'm not exactly positive on what, what it is, but it's, it's a project in Lasern, so that's important. Neighborhood Watch tonight as well in Nice. Wednesday, I have the Earth Committee meeting, and then the CSA in Spring Valley. Earth is in Clear Lake Oaks, that's at 4:00 PM, and CSA is at 7:00 in, in Spring Valley. The meeting with constituents on Thursday in the North Shore, Cow Water Meeting on Friday, and back here on Monday for a meeting with Carol, and we'll have a supervisor's meeting on Tuesday.
Okay. My calendar, agenda review after today.
We postponed our Monday meeting to Wednesday.
Okay.
Excuse me, actually, Thursday morning.
We did, that's right. Apologize.
Okay. Agenda review after today's meeting, and then I'll be also attending National Night Out, but in Lakeport here at 5:30, so come on out, there's, I believe they're going to be giving out hot dogs and all kinds of free things and information about our community and how you can support it. Tomorrow, I will be in the office in the morning, returning phone calls and emails. I have a meeting with constituents at noon, and then, let's see, Thursday, 9:00 with Brock and Bruno, and then noon, I have Seroptimus, and then attending 100 Women at Brass Field Winery, 5:30 Friday.
That's 200 hands.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe I will, I will let them know. Get those 100 women up.
Just doing the math.
It's actually 100-plus women, there's like 180 of us, so. Friday, I will be attending a Hope Rising meeting at 8:00. We have somebody coming into our community wishing to give us grant funds, so we're going to be talking with them, showing them how wonderful our community is and how they can assist us. Monday, I will be another Hope Rising meeting at 8:00, and then have a meeting at 3:00 for another Hope Rising meeting. I take up a lot of time. And then Tuesday, the 13th, first day of school for Lakeport Unified School District, so watch out for the children going and coming from school. I'm very excited about that summer's over and school's starting, and I'm actually starting a new job that morning. I will be the crossing guard for Lakeport Elementary School in the morning, because I have nothing else to do at 7:30 in the morning, so. With that-
Madam Chair, I just, I forgot to mention the trip to Potter, or Lake Pillsbury.
Yes, when I poured out on that.
Yes, it was, it was a really great trip. We got to ride on a boat, on a pontoon boat, and we got to see the Thule Elk, and a bald eagle even appeared out there. So it was just, it was a really great trip, the Lake Pillsbury Alliance hosted the trip and took us on a tour. They live off the grid, there's, it was a lot bigger than I expected, I, this is my first trip out there, and the scarring on the back of the hill at Elk Mountain was really horrendous, and it showed, for me, it was a very, it was a very telling tale about the water that's needed from that lake to fight the fires on the backside of, of Upper Lake and whatnot. So it was just a really informative trip, and I appreciate the fact that we got to go out there, so.
Okay, thank you for that, it was definitely, I was also impressed, I didn't realize how big that lake was.
Yeah.
It was quite impressive. Okay, we will now go to our sec-
We might add, excuse me, Madam Chair, is that that will be discussed next week, the whole Potter Valley project and the impact on Lake Pillsbury. And Carol, can we tell the public what time we set that for?
9:45 next.
Okay, thank you. 9:45, we'll have more information about our Potter Valley trip. Okay, 6.1, our 9:05 item, public input, I have three. Matthew, I'll start with you. Demonstrating of assistive listening devices.
Thank you Supervisor Scott, good morning Board. My name is Matthew Rothstein, I'm Deputy County Administrative Officer. As you'll recall, in fiscal year 1819, your staff took many steps to upgrade the audio and visual equipment in the board chambers, and many of those upgrades were enabled by a generous donation from Lake County Peg TV. On our side, our senior videographer, Sam Houston, undertook a lot of the work to select the right equipment, and each of those decisions was made with the intent of making sure that your meetings were as accessible to the public as possible. People who are viewing the meeting on TV today will notice that the audio and visual quality of our feed, particularly on the Granicus website, have already improved considerably, and that's due to a lot of great work and detailed work by our videographer, Sam Houston, and others. And I wanted to also make sure that the public is aware that we do now have assistive listening devices available. They're very easy to use, and you can actually come into the board meeting at the back of the room, our videographer, Sam Houston, can help you out, but they're just a two-piece device. There is a receiver, which you can just loop over your ear, and this is the unit that you just turn on, and it will serve as a microphone essentially amplifying the sound, and you'll be hearing it from the board feed more or less. So if anybody's having difficulty accessing the meetings here in person because they cannot hear properly, the assistive listening devices are available, and so just go to the back of the board chambers, and Sam Houston will help you with that.
How many of those do we have?
We have four at present.
Okay.
And again, thank you very much to Lake County Peg TV.
Thank you. Michelle Scully, Highland Springs.
Good morning Board. I hadn't really intended to speak, Gary Buckles, who is a 33-year veteran of the Sheriff's Department, was going to speak for our Highland Springs area neighborhood group, and I don't think Gary, I think he was called away. So we, our neighborhood group has been meeting regularly to discuss fire safety and preparedness and what we can do as individuals and as a group, and the group has also had some concerns about safety on the road and in the park, and I won't go into great detail on that because I feel sort of awkward since I also work for you all. But we tried to summarize those concerns in a short and concise way, cognizant of the fact that resources are limited, but with the hope that possibly a few, hopefully simple suggestions and maybe changes would increase safety for people using the park and on the road. And it just really struck home to me, you talked about taking your son, or a child to school. My son graduated a month ago, so, and we were heading back home on Father's Day on June 16th, and we had been in an accident ourselves that had nothing to do with us, but we were the unfortunate recipient of someone hitting a deer and it landing on our windshield while everyone was speeding along on 280. So some accidents happen that you can't do anything about, but when we came home, there had been an accident with two recent Kelseyville High grads, and the road was closed for two hours, and so it just really struck to me that we would be remiss if we didn't share with you our concerns that hopefully some small changes can make a big difference in someone's life.
Thank you, Michelle.
Do you have any questions for me?
Okay.
So the group submitted a letter with the suggestions and also signatures. Thank you.
I will make sure I get a copy of this.
Okay.
See what we can do.
Thank you so much.
And then Gary, now you, is Gary here?
No.
Okay. If I could get a copy of that back tonight, that'd be good. Our 6.2 item, our 9:10 AM item, Presentation, Proclamation of Designating the Month of August 2019 as Child Support Awareness Month in Lake County. Supervisor Crandall?
Hello?
Hi.
So I have here a proclamation designated the month of August 2019. How about that? That's better. Of 2019 as Child Support Awareness Month. Whereas, the Lake County Department of Child Support Services believes that children are our most precious resource and become healthy, productive, and well-adjusted adults through the support and nurturing of their families. And whereas, the Lake County Department of Child Support Services believes that child support provides an essential bridge to self-sufficiency and financial security for children and their families by ensuring that children have a reliable source of financial and medical support, allowing them to grow, learn, and achieve their dreams. And whereas, the Lake County Department of Child Support Services currently serves over 2,679 families, of which 1,535 families are former recipients of cash aid, and in the 12 months ending June 30, 2019, the Lake County Department of Child Support Services collected and dispersed over $4.8 million in current and past due child support payments. And whereas, the Lake County Department of Child Support Services is strongly committed to the mission of working together with parents for their children. And whereas, the staff of Lake County Department of Child Support Services believes in and practice the core values of integrity, teamwork, quality, respect, and public service. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Lake County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of August 2019 as Child Support Awareness Month in Lake County, adopted this sixth day of August 2019. Signed, Chairwoman Tina Scott.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Tammy Widener, I'm the Deputy Director of the Child Support Office. I'm very pleased to be here for the presentation and Child Support Awareness Month. I would also like to say that we will be participating to promote our services in Lake County at National Night Out in Lakeport today, and at Running Creek, at the big-time event on the 24th, we will be there as well, so we hope to see all of you there. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will go to our 6.3 item, our 9:15 AM item, Consideration of Resolution Number 2019-10 of the Board of Directors of North Shore Fire Protection District to enable the Lake County Register of Voters to add a special fire tax to ensure measure to the November 5, 2019 election. Chief, did you want to, one of the chiefs want to come up? Maybe just give a brief, you can come sit.
Good morning, I'm Mike Sanzio, the Fire Chief for North Shore Fire District, and the Board of Directors for the North Shore Fire District opted to go increase the taxes for the North Shore Fire District. We are trying to consolidate all of the property taxes into one. Currently, we have four different assessment districts that we collect from, and it's a, it's an administrative nightmare, quite honestly, from that standpoint, and they're not all equal. So we want to equalize everything across the district. Three of our four communities on the North Shore have not had an increase in our direct charges for the fire district since 1997, so we too understand how to work off of a fixed income, so to speak. So we put a vote in front of the voters, and hopefully, we can get it to pass. One other significant thing that we did do was we went away from units of benefit, and we went to a straight, flat fee. So it would be more clear to the communities and the constituents that, of what their bill will actually be.
Okay. Is there any questions for the chief or comments? So any questions or comments from the public on this item? Supervisor Brown?
Carol, did, did you get the email from Denise? Palmer?
No.
I just, I just got it, so she sent it to you and to me, and I'm not sure if, if it's something we need to address right, right now. I don't know, I don't know the relevance of it to this.
I'm just now looking at them, so the question the Health Director is raising via email is that the resolution put forward by North Shore Fire doesn't address inter-facility transfers, which is ambulance services.
Oh, microphone, is there?
I am, I may be awake a minute. Here's what would happen if this resolution isn't adequate, it's, it's a matter of timing, and-
Okay.
And the fire district would miss its opportunity to get on the upcoming ballot, is that correct, our register of voters is here? Yes?
Well, okay, so you got that puzzled look, like what, what are they talking about? So I'm looking at this again, I don't think it's relevant. IFTs have nothing to do, there, that's not an obligation that the fire departments have, it's a permit-
Right.
-that they have, it's totally separate, it's not paid for typically from this, from an additional tax, it's paid for through insurance and all this other stuff, so I don't, I don't think it's relevant at all.
Well, and it's also not relevant to your board's discussion today.
Right.
This is a resolution that was duly passed by an independent special district. Your board's, your board's response to it is either to approve it moving forward to the ballot or not, but it's not to change their resolution, you have no power to do that.
Right. Their, their operation is specific to this, is dealing with 911 calls and that type of thing, so maybe you could ask Denise to forward this to them-
Yeah.
-and address that concern with them in a separate, in a separate manner.
We'll make sure you get it, so you know what we're talking about.
Because it's not, it's not, it's not to you anyway, it's, it's in general, it's in general to all, all the transport and IFTs, so I don't think it's specific to any department, so it's, it's worth having the discussion, but it's not.
And today's action is merely about the board approving, putting this on the ballot, not modifying-
Yeah, I literally got this at 9:18, so it, I didn't have time to really review it all at once, so.
Thank you.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, just wanted to, looking at the resolution and everything, but I wanted to reiterate that Mike and, I'm not sure of the other lady's name, that was, that's commonly with you, I met with her Friday.
Yeah, Shannon Stillwell.
Yes, so Mike and Shannon have been at all the town halls talking about this and answering questions of their plight to, to bring this forward, and, and have explained to a lot of constituents about this, the ballots went, not ballots, but the surveys went out in the mail as well, so they did a lot of work on this, and so I just wanted to add that, I've seen Mike and, and Shannon actively involved trying to promote this, or actually at least inform people about it, so, yeah.
Any further questions or comments before we take action?
I'll just make one quick comment, I think it makes perfect sense with the consolidation of the fire districts in the North Shore to do the same thing, consolidation of the tax benefit, that way, everybody gets treated equally the same. I'm sure it is quite a accounting nightmare to deal with it, potentially also in our auditor controller area trying to disperse the correct funds from the correct areas, so that'll simplify things, but I just want to reiterate some of the things that I read in there, has nothing to do with the decision we're making, but that the funding would only be used for fire and EMT purposes, upgrade of equipment, of apparatus, I've seen this work with Measure D in the Lake County Fire Protection District, helped out Lower Lake a whole lot, I know that Lakeport just passed something, Middletown just passed something. In 1997, I was paying 98 cents a gallon for gas, so we live in a different world now, and I think it is time to upgrade, especially with the fires we've been seeing, so absolutely, I support this.
There's nothing further, then I'm looking for action?
I'll, I'll offer the resolution.
Well-
Oh, no, okay.
I appreciate Bruno's support for, the, the resolution is just to put it on the ballot, it's not taking a position by the board, which is not something we're-
Your board is just approving the request to put it on the ballot, you don't have, there's no resolution for you to approve.
Oh, okay.
The agenda item's written a little-
Yeah, I'm just used to offering those, but I get it, I get it now, so.
Yeah.
Without further ado, I'll motion to approve Resolution Number 2019-10 of the Board of Directors of North Shore Fire Protection District enabling the Lake County Register of Voters to add a special fire tax measure to the November 5, 2019 election.
Second.
So you're approving the request of the resolution? Yes.
Okay, approving the request of the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion in second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got a motion in three seconds, all from Moke.
All right, we're right on time for our 9:30 item, 6.4, Consideration of Report From the Ad-Hoc Committee, Task, Tax to Work with the County Treasurer Tax Collector, and B, Consideration of Designation from the Treasurer Tax Collector effective January 10, 2020, and C, Consideration of- All right. We're right on time for our 9:30 item, 6.4, consideration of report from the Ad Hoc Committee, task, tax to work with the County Treasurer Tax Collector, and B, consideration of resignation from the Treasurer Tax Collector effective January 10th, 2020, and C, consideration of staff report on the board option relative to the recent passage of AB 632.
So, I believe the supervisors are going to report out on A and B, and then when the time comes for C, we're going to invite Matthew Rustine and Patrick Solven up to give you the overview of AB 632.
So, I wanted to come today and give you a summary of what the Ad Hoc Committee has been doing, and I wanted to offer full transparency also on what we have done. So, I'm just going to read a message that I printed out yesterday or typed out yesterday. "On May 29th, Chair Scott established an Ad Hoc Committee to continue discussions of performance concerns with the Treasurer Tax Collector Department. This was originally discussed at great length on November 20th of 2018. Many of the concerns were stated as being worked on. Some of these concerns was the lack of consistent defaulted property tax auctions, checks such as TOT and property tax, checks not being deposited timely, a lack of transparency when it comes to our investment practices or status, and also issues of customer service in the department coming directly to us from constituents." And that came from the November 20th meeting minutes. That was, the meeting itself was kind of led by Chair Steele at that time. Follow-up meeting was set to be held on January 29th, 2019. In the meantime, we have waited patiently for change and for a report from the department. And this is why, and with no report from the department, this is why Chair Scott established the ad hoc. "This year, unfortunately, we have failed to organize a tax auction sale for defaulted properties. I have received many complaints about checks not being deposited timely, which includes both property tax and TOT. The customer service still seems to be an issue, as I have had to provide assistance for multiple constituents this year, and we will not, and we still do not have the changes in the transparency of our investments. Even the simple act of creating an oversight committee for the investments was not requested since the November 20th meeting. Due to the situation that continues to occur in one of the three key financial offices in our county, the Ad Hoc Committee offered that Barbara Ringan, the Lake County's Treasurer Tax Collector, resign from her position in order to give us the opportunity to search and replace her in the effort to resolve the issues and alleviate the concerns of this very important department, especially in our new fiscal crisis that we are dealing with. Seeing as how the Treasurer Tax Collector is an elected position, it is entirely up to the elected person to make this decision. However, on June 15th, 2019, the Ad Hoc Committee received a letter of resignation from Barbara Ringan stating that she would resign from her elected position. It was stated that August would be the timeframe where a transition plan would begin. Due to the importance of the position in the department, the Ad Hoc Committee wanted to get this information to the board as quickly as was possible, so that we can give direction to staff as to what our decision would be on moving forward with searching for an interim Treasurer Tax Collector for the remaining term, which ends on January 2nd, 2023. The Ad Hoc Committee is committed to ensure a proper transition, so that we are confident that everything has been done to ensure we are ready to move forward. Before allowing this discussion to begin, I do want to highlight Ms. Barbara Ringan and for her almost 30 years of service to our county. She has been with us through the thick and thin before our unfortunate waves of fires year after year, which have only complicated our financial status and thus increasing the needs of her department. Ms. Ringan has been polite and kind throughout our conversations, even though we are very aware that this is a tough decision that she is taking. Ms. Ringan, I want to thank you for your service to the county, to our community, and your constituents, and your dedication to the county, and for stepping up for when your predecessor left the same position you currently hold. Originally, Ms. Ringan stated, as is stated in the memo, that she would resign as of January 10th, 2020. However, yesterday, I met with her, and we are looking at changing that date to be late July, at least to be able to find, finish up the fiscal year. That way, her staff would have the time to be trained on every step that needs to be taken in order to accomplish the year's reporting and the year's tasks. However, we wish for the Ad Hoc Committee to continue to be able to oversee the transition and oversee to make sure that these tasks are all completed. That's my report.
Supervisor Simon?
You know, Bruno pretty much covered everything as far as we go. You know, the Ad Hoc Committee, when we first met, obviously, you know, the first thing I want to do is obviously thank Barbara for her long-term service and everything, and coming in and communicating with us. This is a tough discussion and decision. You know, when we move forward as the Ad Hoc Committee to talk about a resignation from an elected official, obviously Bruno stated again, it is up to the elected official, but we did receive a letter, and promptly bringing it to the board for these discussions to continue is something that we felt needed to be done. So, I won't rehash everything that Bruno's gone over, but we've had the meetings, and we're here at the board now, so we can move forward, and I'm glad that Barbara is here, and we'll have an opportunity that she can speak from her point of view.
Anything further from the board before I open it to public?
Not yet. I'll hold off.
Okay. Is there any public comment? See no movement?
So.
Supervisor Brown?
So, until this agenda item came out, you know, in compliance with the Brown Act, we're not allowed to have this discussion. So, this is all new to me. I didn't realize that I got the resignation, didn't know anything about it. I agree with all of your comments, but, you know, and having known Barbara for, not necessarily worked with her with the county for those entire 30 years, I have known her for all that time. And I have known her to always be the one to step up, help out. Things have been a challenge for the last couple of years, few years, and I do appreciate her willingness to take the job to begin with. There was a couple of other things that weren't thrown in there. One of them was this cannabis debacle that the board thrust upon her too. So, that didn't help with the decrease in staff and all that that she had. So, there are a lot of underlying issues that added to the problems in that office. I'm not sure where we're going to go with this today. As far as the, I know there's a road that somebody's planning on driving us down, and I'm not really comfortable with it at this point, and that's combining the two offices. I don't, I think there's a real issue with that. I think there needs to be some oversight, that when you combine those two offices, that oversight goes away. Fortunately, with the person that we have in the tax, the auditor's office currently, we have that comfort level that we can do that. That person's not always going to be there. In fact, I'm not speaking for her, but this may be the reason that somebody like that leaves. So, we need to be very careful about what we ask for, because we might not like what we get. I think there's some thought we need to give into this and some input that we need to seek from her, from Kathy, on her thoughts on how that should happen. Not just a conversation of, you know, we're thinking about doing this. I really want to know what she thinks candidly. And I'm not sure exactly where to have that conversation, but it has not occurred. It has not occurred. Nope. It's, I know what you're going to say, that it has, because I know you've spoken with her, but the conversation, the candid conversation has not occurred yet. Anyway, we'll get to that. The other thing is, if we're going to go until July for the resignation, why don't we have a special election? We have plenty of time for that. Is that something we're able to do?
I don't know as I sit here.
Yeah. Is it something we could look into?
Absolutely.
And I wouldn't have expected anybody to know that. I mean, I see our Register of Voters is even out there, but I'm not going to put anybody on the spot. Something that I would like to look at to see if that's a possibility. Because I really believe that these, those three elected positions up there are elected for a reason, so the voters can decide who's there, not, and there's a check and balance that occurs with those three, with all of them, actually, all the elected officials that we have, that we might be losing if we have somebody that we don't know yet that may be running for office and holding both of those. I want to make sure that we have that check and balance in place. So, that's what I have to say right now.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. Just, you know, follow up. As the Ad Hoc Committee, we're trying to involve every conversation, everyone that this is going to affect. Obviously, it affects everyone in the county, just like you said, the voters who voted for the tax collector. That's why we wanted to bring it to the board. But hopefully, when we're having these conversations, they are candid conversations. We're asking for folks that are sitting around the table to let us know on the path that we're on, if we're going to do the right things. We've talked about a transition plan, making sure everybody's involved, and there has been some very honest discussion. So, hopefully, we'll follow up on that if, you know, and we'll bring it back to the board as we do. But I know there was some discussion, especially with Kathy, that we wanted to, you know, get the honest opinion of where we were going here. So, I just wanted to report on that, that we're trying to look at this from every angle. We know it's a very uneasy position to be in, but we're trying to see everything as we go down the path. And ultimately, it is up to the board, and ultimately, it is up to Barbara. But this is something we're tasked with, and we brought it back.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I'm going to let Ms. Hutchinson speak.
I think that, I mean, it goes without saying that a transition team and a transition plan hasn't been put in place yet. There have been meetings, including the Auditor Controller, but no formal steps toward any transition, because this discussion at the board level needed to be had first. And so, I think if the supervisors continue, the direction to staff is probably going to be to form such a transition team.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I just want to actually agree with some of the statements made by Supervisor Brown. I think that the checks and balances are truly important, and I would love to see those departments stay whole, so that they can be unique and be able to collaborate together for the betterment of the county. I think that's, sometimes it's good to consolidate, but sometimes it's not a good idea. And I think that those positions were created for checks and balance purposes, and I would like to make sure that we keep it that way as well. So, my belief is that we should continue and push for a transition plan to make sure that it's a smooth of a shift from one person in that position to another, and that we also look at, in the future, doing an open application rather than a special election, as I would prefer not having to spend more money on a special election when we can have those exact same people that would probably throw their hats in the race for an election to submit an application to us and be vetted by this board, and it would only be for the rest of the term, and then they would have to run for an election as well. So, that would be my opinion of what I would like to see us do.
Further on the reporting out of A before we move to B? Okay. We will move to B, which is an action item, acceptance of resignation. Barbara, did you want to come up?
Good morning. Yes. As Bruno mentioned, I had originally decided to retire in January, but soon came to the realization that that just was not adequate time for training and moving forward in a new direction. So, I've decided to postpone that, possibly, I don't have an exact date, but the end of the fiscal year, tax year. But again, that depends on training and the transition. So, that's kind of, I don't say up in the air, but it's still a work in progress. So, it depends on where we are or where we can go. We're still struggling with staffing. We're at 50% again. Another employee resigned last month. We've had, just even the last year and a half, we've had 17 recruitments. One successful, maybe two successful, and the balance have not been successful. So, it's impossible to do the day-to-day operations successfully with 50% staff, both in Treasury and on the tax side. So, going forward, I hope with the future, we'll be able to fill those positions and move forward. On the tax side, it takes three to five years, like many departments, to become effective employees where they actually know the processes day-to-day, they can come into the office and answer even tax questions. I know Bruno mentioned that we do get a lot of tax complaints. Unfortunately, that is the nature of the business. We will still continue after I retire, get those complaints. Many of those complaints were unfounded. The taxpayer just didn't quite have the knowledge of the laws that we are required to follow. So, I do apologize for those if they feel that they were not adequately addressed. But I do want the department to move forward in a positive manner. I've worked for the county, like Bruno mentioned, for almost 30 years, and I'm very proud to be a tax, serve the taxpayers of this county. I love Lake County since I moved here, and it's very important to me that it's a positive direction for us, for not only our office, the assessor's office, and the auditor's office.
Is there any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? I see no movement. I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier?
Sorry. I have a question for B. Says, "Consideration of resignation," and then there's a date. But can we consider a resignation without a date at this point?
Amend the resignation. The resignation, the letter itself can be amended, I'm assuming.
And just with my conversations with Barbara, there's not a specific date other than finishing the fiscal year. Does July 31st allow you to, because I know July 18th or 19th is when your reports are due to the state or abouts, I believe, or that's when you're done?
I don't, I don't have an exact date. You know, I would have to do some research to find out which date would be best for the office.
There's no, there's no time crunch to accept this immediately until it's resolved, right?
Anita?
You don't actually have an effective resignation to accept without a date. So, if it's a moving target, what you can do is accept the fact that the Treasurer Tax Collector has notified you of her intention to resign likely at some point in 2020, and accept that notification to the extent it is one. That's really as far as you can go. As far as the earlier question about special elections, I'm looking at Government Code 25304. "The Board of Supervisors shall fill by appointment all vacancies that occur in any office filled by the appointment of the Board and elected county officers, except Judge of the Superior Court and Supervisors. The appointee shall hold office for the unexpired term or until the first Monday after January 1st, succeeding the next general election." And just as a further point of information, when your board makes that appointment, that decision is done for the length of that unexpired term. It's not subject to rescission or rethinking by your board.
Right. Which is what we've done in the past.
Right.
Actually, a couple of times, and three times that I can think of in another, one in another office, so.
Any further questions or comments? Then I'm looking for the motion that Anita.
So, I'm going to continue. I hesitate to move forward without a specific date, and here's the reason why. We originally had the conversation about the resignation because of what we're not seeing in that department that we would like to see. For instance, just earlier this month, we got calls from the school districts saying they hadn't received their payments, or we received phone calls from hoteliers that the TID had not yet received the TOT tax, and the TID is meant to help bring more revenue to our county. So, those are important things that we need to make sure gets done correctly and at the right time, and we were supposed to have a property tax auction, has not happened this year. So, again, we're hitting some of those roadblocks. So, Plan A was what we asked and what we received. Plan B is a different course of action. Without a date, then does that mean we need to come back? And next week, we talk about what our Plan B is, or Plan A? We stick, we agree to a date and then keep moving forward with that date, knowing that we're going to plan the transition. Because to leave it open-ended, to me, does not fix the problem that we know that we have as a problem.
Supervisor Brown?
I don't have an answer to your question, but I do have a follow-up with that. All of these problems, we've acknowledged, she's acknowledged them, and 50% staffing level. So, it falls back on us. We need to do something to do everything we can to increase those staffing levels. When another elected official showed up here with his crew to talk about 15% or 20% staffing levels, we gave increases. We didn't ask the sheriff to resign. So, let's do the same thing. Let's start, let's commit to do the same thing with other departments that are struggling and having the same problems in order to resolve those issues. This falls back on us ultimately, so that's where, that's where the issue really lie.
And if you remember during the budget meeting, I gave a complaint of us taking one away from her office and asking her to do more.
I do remember that.
And so, that was a time to have that conversation. But we didn't do what we needed to do in order to make that happen. And so, at what point are we going to do, what needs to get done to make these things happen? Because we need, it's one out of three key generating revenue.
Sure.
Departments.
Yeah.
And everything that comes out of that department and the other two departments is what we can do to serve the community.
Yeah. And use the money for those other employees, those vacancies. It is, it's a chicken and egg thing. There's no doubt about it.
Right.
The assessor, you know, we got to raise money. We got to raise money to go to them. They got to get the money so that they can, you know, all this stuff rolls downhill. But it ultimately falls back on us. But it ultimately falls back on us. We resolved it with the Sheriff's Department, or hopefully we did, you know, it seems, seems like we have. So maybe that's what we need to talk about. We have that discussion. I know that's not on the agenda, but I'm just throwing it out there. It's relative to her, her job, so.
Right.
And how we continue.
And just, not to clarify what you're saying, just to add on, I'm not pointing fingers. In my monologue that I just gave earlier, I said, "We failed to put a tax auction." It's not a specific thing. It's, we as a county aren't doing what we need to be doing to generate the revenue that we should be generating. So Ms. Ringan, I'm just going to ask you flat out, and then afterwards we'll have to figure out, do you agree to putting July 31st, 2020, as your resignation date?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. Yeah, definitive date, you know, we're here today having that discussion because an email came, you know, in a response to a question that we asked you. You know, a date would be nice, obviously. If we don't get one, which you just stated we're not going to, then we'll continue down the road as a board to focusing on this department, as Bruno said, one of the, one of the three top revenue generators of the county, that we need to get production out of it, and we need to be moving forward in a positive manner for everyone in the county's benefit. And, you know, I guess we'll see what the Board decides today, but, you know, we're here today because we received that email from you, and we were hoping that we'd be able to get something solidified. So we'll find out where the discussion goes for the rest of the day here, but we will continue this on. I agree with Bruno, where we need to keep the ad hoc committee together. We need to focus on the issues that we've raised that need to be completed. Obviously, we understand the class and comp study's coming down the road, and hopefully we'll be making those decisions as a board for every department. But the revenue generating departments are some of the most important ones that we have. So thank you for your time today. That's what I can say, and we'll continue the conversations.
Supervisor Crennel?
Just reiterating what I think I heard you say earlier, you did say fiscal year next year, right?
Right, fiscal, tax year.
So would that be a general statement? Would that be a good enough statement to make as a, as a definitive date? I mean, it's not definitive, but at least it gives a timeline.
It would certainly define a period during which a transition team could be working if your Board wants to give direction for a transition team. I mean, there, there are issues that need to be addressed and resolved regardless of anybody's resignation date. And so a transition team or a, whatever you want to call a team, could continue to work on those issues.
But still too vague to be.
But do you think it's necessary to have something that we've accepted, something that we can say that she's sent this letter? So we have, I mean, I think that's kind of Anita was trying to go with.
What you have now, yes, is an intention.
An intention.
But that's all you have. So I would caution you again, the office is not vacant by a, "I think I might resign" statement.
But if she said fiscal year, there is an end to the fiscal reporting, right?
Right, yeah. If, if, if a statement was made that resignation would occur within a particular time period, that would at least give you some, some clear limitation as to when it, when it would have to have been done. But absent that, if it's as things go, or what I've heard is as, depending upon the needs of the department, that's a moving target, and that's not an effective resignation. You can hear similar things from many people on Monday morning, you know? It's, by Monday afternoon, usually people have a different mindset. So absent something more specific, though again, if, if, if there would be a limitation in terms of no later than or within the, that would be, that would be an effective.
So it'd be good for us to.
Yeah.
Accept the intention today?
Well, you can, you can accept the fact that that intention. Has been, that intention has been, you've been notified of that intention, and you'll, you're going to take action in preparation for that coming to fruition. That's really what you can do.
And if I could add to that, you know, I think then the action is a transition team that's working on it. It wouldn't serve the county well to wait until that time or close to that time to be working on that transition. So preparing for that, as, as the Treasurer-Tax Collector has indicated, you know, she, she wants to go full cycle in order to be sure to train her staff fully, a transition team needs to be afforded an opportunity to, to work on that and support that.
Okay.
I think so. What I was trying to get at is, Bruno, you mentioned the 31st because of the fiscal year.
June 30th would be the last day of the fiscal year.
And then the 30, July 31st was an extra month, or something like that?
But if, if, if Ms. Ringan doesn't agree, then we don't have anything.
We can't put the date.
We can't, we can't force her to take a date. Okay.
I, I think it's important, though, that we do take some action with exception, with accepting the intention.
Accepting the intention and establishing a.
Transition.
Transition team for the potential resignation. Trying to figure it out.
In preparation for, for that possibility, yeah. Yeah, you can do that.
I'm just asking for clarification from, you said, I think it's important that we take action on this. Why?
Just so we have it documented that we.
But we couldn't have it. It just doesn't have to be today. I mean, I'm not sure why it has to be done today.
Well, it doesn't have to be today, but I think it's important to, to do that. Because we've had so much discussion, I'm going to open up to public comment again. Is there any other public comment on this? Okay, see no movement, then bring it back to the board if we want to take action or move this a couple of weeks, or what is? Supervisor Simon?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the intended resignation of the Treasurer-Tax Collector. Doesn't have an effective, you know, an effective date at this point, but we talked about the potential of the, end of the fiscal year, and also establish a transition team in anticipation of the possible resignation at the end of the fiscal year.
Second.
Our motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you. All right, and then C, consideration of staff report on board options relative to the recent passage of AB 632.
And just to clarify, Madam Chair, in light of your earlier discussion, I believe this agenda item is followed with possible direction to staff. There would be no possible direction to staff. This would be informational only.
Right.
Good morning once again. Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer.
Can you hang on just a moment, Matthew? Did the Treasurer-Tax Collector leave us?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. As your Board will recall, on Tuesday, September 18, you declared your intent to pursue legislation that would enable consolidation of the offices of Auditor, Controller, and Treasurer-Tax Collector. And in response, Assemblymember Aguirre Curry authored and Senator Mike McGuire co-authored AB 632. And Governor Newsom signed AB 632 into law on Tuesday, July 9. As you will recall, this legislation was intended to provide the flexibility to combine these offices, and that's part of why we haven't had more robust conversations of all the details of what this may look like, because this legislation intended to purely enable, provide another tool for your Board to address your fiscal and staffing crises. So this specific tool comes in the form of Government Code Section 24304.2, which authorizes the Boards of Supervisors in the counties of Mendocino, Santa Cruz, Sonoma, Trinity, Tulare, and now Lake County to consolidate those fiscal offices. And one detail that's unique to our situation in Lake County, the county clerk function is consolidated to the Office of the Auditor-Controller, and that was authorized by Ordinance Number 2198 on October 19, 1993. That action would need to be undone also by ordinance, and it would be effective at the end of an elective term. So this is not an action that we can immediately take at this time. The next election will be in November of 2022, as we've already previously discussed. So certainly staffed by spring of 2021 or perhaps earlier, in light of your Board's conversation this morning, we would recommend that you evaluate consolidation. And certainly Kathy Sederland, our Auditor-Controller, and the Treasurer-Tax Collector at that time would be really, really important contributors to that evaluation. And Kathy has already expressed her willingness to participate, and we're grateful for that. But again, in order to combine the offices of Treasurer-Tax Collector and Auditor-Controller, your Board would need to act by ordinance to align the county clerk function with a different office. And Patrick Sullivan, our Tax Administrator, is here to discuss what your options would be for that alignment.
Good morning. There would be a few different possibilities for your Board to consider at that time. If the county clerk were to be removed from the Functionator-Controller's office, it could be consolidated with the assessor's office. You can have various combinations. You can have assessor clerk recorder. You can have a combined office of clerk recorder and a standalone assessor. You could also consider a standalone county clerk's office. Those would be the remaining possibilities. The state law is pretty limited on what you're allowed to consider. So at that time, after evaluating what the appropriate course of action would be, your Board could choose within those various options.
Any questions? Has to be many.
So I think to summarize, there really is no option to act under AB 632 until the end of the terms of our current elected offices.
That's correct.
The Treasurer-Tax Collector and the Auditor-Controller are both elected at the same time. They have two and a half more years, three and a half more years in their present terms. There's, there's no way to act on AB 632 before that.
Right, and there is an opportunity because the end of those elective terms is coincident. They end at the same time. There's an opportunity to consolidate that mayor may not still be there if we did pursue a special election that changed the interval at which those positions were elected. So certainly that'd be something we would want our registrar of voters, Catherine McMullin, to weigh in on if we're trying to maintain maximal flexibility going forward.
So if your Board wanted staff to pursue those options, the time to do it would probably be two to two and a half years from now.
Right, yes.
To allow a year or so of planning time.
Okay. Any questions? Any public comment or questions on this item? Okay. With that, that was for report only, and if there's no questions, I think we are done for this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have finished our timed items.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I request a break?
Okay, a five-minute break.
Comfort break.
Return at 10:08. All right, welcome. We're back in session. We're going to take up our 7.2, consideration of allowing cannabis use permit for outdoor cultivation license to follow Fire Code 42090 as agricultural activity. Do you know if it was Mike Lynn or Supervisor Sepeda that wanted to start?
So I can start it off. So there were, there was a review, I believe, or a, a better understanding of Fire Code 4290 based on commercial use of properties. And since cannabis is commercial in our way of stating it and the way that it's written in our use permits, it was coming back now that we would go back to the licensees and tell them that the roads needed to meet Fire Code 4290 and 4291, which is a lot more extensive of roadwork than typically agricultural type of roads would be. So I worked with, I spoke with the staff. Unfortunately, Director Delval was on vacation, so I met with Jack Smalley, who's the interim Deputy Director or Assistant, sorry, not sure what the actual name of the position is.
Chief Building Official Interim.
Chief Building Official Interim, and some of his staff as well, to get an idea of where CDD was standing and a better understanding of what was happening. Then I spoke with Ms. Grant about looking at a way to make a narrow change to only those doing outdoor cultivation, not processing, not manufacturing, not anything else, because at that point that is commercial activity. Because to me, the issue was twofold. One is we are looking to use a code for something that is exactly like agricultural activity, but it's seen different because of the type of product that is being grown in this agricultural activity. This would create roads in far-off locations because we are asking for people to grow cannabis in a limited area because of our exclusionary zone away from our community growth boundaries. We already had discussions about not wanting to put concrete slabs on agricultural land, and now we would be enhancing the roads to a much higher standard. So I wanted to look into, how do we change it just for the outdoor cultivation and not anything else? Worked with Ms. Grant, came up with this resolution. I did pass this on to Chief Willie Sepeda, who gave me back some feedback. He still had a few concerns, one of them being that he wanted to make sure that the other fire districts had access to this resolution to give their feedback as well. So this is not a approved today, move forward. This is get feedback from the departments, from the fire districts, from the Board to see if this is the direction we would like to go and continue going. So this is more of a discussion and direction to staff than it is a decision to making today.
Mike Lynn?
It's the best summary I can give you right now.
I just had a few comments to make on it. So the way, the way I understand it's, it's written is that the 4290 and 4291, as it is written, would still be required if there was a structure on the site. So in most cases, if we're speaking cannabis applications, for example, a lot of them do either have existing structures or are proposing structures, or in a lot of other cases, the Planning Commission has been requiring restroom facilities. So I just want to make sure that's brought to your attention.
I have another question. So one of the things to consider, because it's always, there's always some, something that else, you know, it's not just a one-size-fits-all thing. So would we, would we address differently the possibility of this property that's, that needs the road built, if it's also an easement to another piece of property? And, and then also if there's an easement to go to the property? Because then it serves somebody else, and so I think the rules of 4290 should apply. So as far as the turnouts and the width of the road and that type of thing, because it's not just for the cannabis operation, then it's a potential for, for other uses beyond that.
And I don't know specifically about that. I do know that one of the things that Chief Sepeda was asking for was that eventually it would still allow for a review of what is the requirement versus a strict, this is what you must meet, let's look at the project, and each project would give them the flexibility to say, no, this is fine, or no, this needs more stringent roads. And of course, Chief Sepeda could come up and clarify that statement in case I, I misinterpreted what he had told me. But as far as the easement, I'm not aware of that situation. What I'm looking for is to get past the differentiation between agriculture and cannabis with these rules, because if all they're doing is outdoor cultivation, if they're building new buildings for processing or other things like that, then I, I believe that we shouldn't be separating it and adding on so many barriers that we are just walking backwards. I don't think that, I, I want to make sure that we are continuously being safe in our community, but I also don't want to see something that we've worked so hard, especially for the purpose of increased revenue, that we now set up a barrier to the point that it's just not going to work out.
Anita?
Thank you. And thank you. And I did want to say a special thanks to Chief Sepeda for being so helpful. He sent me all kinds of documentation and explained some of his concerns, which was very helpful, and to Mike Lynn as well yesterday, going through some, some things. There's also a concern here that this, by this resolution, your Board doesn't cross lanes with state definitions of ag, which this is not, and also run contrary to the existing cannabis tax ordinance. So this is trying to liken the use to an ag use because of its location in an ag zone when there is no structure. And simply stating that when there is, then it's treated like anything else. When there isn't, it's treated like anything else for purposes of 4290. As Supervisor. As Supervisor Sabatier said, this is very much a maiden effort that requires a great deal more wordsmithing, the point I believe he's already made, which was to get it in front of your board, to stakeholders and the public for further comment to see if it can be appropriately fine-tuned.
Thank you. With that, if there's no further...
Good morning. Greg Vitale, Division Chief with CAL FIRE and Fire Chief for South Lake County Fire Protection District, which includes Lock Lomond, Cobb, Hidden Valley, and Middletown. I just wanted to, with the chief's support, have a moment to speak regarding the importance of 4290 and 4291. It's not something that I came up with or the chief's. I just want to make sure as we move forward, we move forward cautiously with full intention because egress throughout, as all of us know, everybody's on the board been affected by the fires the last seven-plus years. Egress is critical. And by looking at road standards, bridges, these are real issues in this county. And if we try to move something forward and disregard those, I get concerned about what the effects in the future may be. So whatever, you know, grow operations or agriculture or commercial, I'm not getting in the weeds on that. I'm just looking and want to state the concerns that we have as fire chiefs and the importance of 4290 and 4291. And wanted to bring that forward so that we want to work together and have that communication, but also with the other effects that come with that, just to have our eyes wide open. So thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier.
And just to add to that, I did submit the resolution to all the fire chiefs throughout the county. And I think that rather than looking to have those conversations via email, I'm going to be making an invite so we can all have a roundtable, sit down, and have those discussions. And of course, CDD would have to be involved, since they're heavily involved in the cannabis ordinance. That's what I'm looking forward to do.
Okay. If there's nothing further from the board, I'm going to open up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? If you could state your name, you have three minutes.
Hi, Michael Green. Just wanted to thank Supervisor Sabatier for moving this item forward. The issue of road improvements on cannabis farms is a make or break for many. I can tell you it was a $14,000 item for a client I represented previously, and it's cost prohibitive for many cannabis applicants. And it's going to be a make or break issue. I've read the resolution. It's very carefully worded. I think it could go today. I think it was very carefully worded. It's advisory to the fire agencies. It doesn't put them in a bind. But I did actually take the opportunity to read the fire safe regulations, which basically take industrial, residential, and it's all about creating defensible space around these things. So in the fire safe regulations themselves, I think there are some things that if you're going to be sitting down, let's talk about, because there's an intersection between the fire standards and then the permitting authority that's going to be issuing the building permit and the use permit. And the intersection is kind of unclear to me. So first off, cannabis plants themselves, just outdoor cultivation, under the fire standards themselves, would be considered a green belt. I don't care if it's pure agricultural use or not, but if it's irrigated or landscaped, if it's a parking area around a barn, if it's a maintained vineyard, orchard, or animal crop in the field that doesn't dry in the field, that's green belt. That's actually protective. It's not a fire risk. It's fire protection. The other question is, I'm not really sure where CAL FIRE and the other fire agencies are coming in here. They're being asked to give comments on the use permit applications, but they don't have the final authority to sign off on those use permits or the building permits. They're asked for their input, but as of right now, I don't see that they have the actual authority to do inspections for compliance with this. And that may be a broader issue than cannabis, but it looks like, unless I'm mistaken, the county has not yet adopted an ordinance that would incorporate the entirety of the fire safe regulations into our planning process. So it's a little unclear how they would apply to all types of agriculture, if it's considered green belt or irrigated crop or what have you. But probably more importantly is, when and where are we dragging the fire agencies into this? Is it just for review of the use permits? And then CDD is still signing off? Are we actually asking the fire agencies, as in the resolution states, that they have the final sign off on the projects? So I would actually drill down into the fire safe regulations themselves to try to get a better understanding of the intersection between the planning agencies and the fire agencies and what the deliverable is at the end of the day.
Want to respond?
So as the permitting agency on all these cannabis grows, we do look towards CAL FIRE and the fire chiefs on their recommendations for the 4290 and 4291. They are the ones that come out. And so they are the ones that come out, you know, for any kind of fires or anything like that. They are the ones that come out there. So we do look for their recommendations for the 4290, 4291. We do do the inspections at county level, but their recommendations and the minimum state requirements for those areas, we do look at.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris Jennings. A couple of questions. So in your resolution that you wrote up, says if there's already pre-existing structures and you have to meet these standards. So pretty much everyone that was on there was Article 72 back, and they had to have a pre-existing structure prior to getting to this phase. The majority of us already have, say, a home on their property. A couple of other issues, you know, I have is like, for instance, Jerusalem Grade. You guys own that road, responsible for that bridge. I've seen CAL FIRE trucks go over that bridge. And so I don't understand why projects in Jerusalem Grades getting held up when you sign off a gentleman on Old Spruce Grove Road with an old wooden bridge that I can guarantee you does not meet any standard, like the standard that my bridge has. My bridge is an old railroad car. Those old railroad cars generally hold about 100 tons. The property is accessible out there, other than about a month, maybe two months out of the year. And at the end of the day, no one's out there operating. So you know, you make this comment, you guys make the inspections. Why are some people getting signed off? There's people in this room right now who I know their properties, and I know they don't meet these standards, but they've been signed off. Now there's people such as myself and a bunch of others that are getting held up, not getting signed off, where it's almost kind of discriminatory, where it feels as if it's being picky and choosy, like, well, we're not going to sign you off because of this, but this person over here on Old Spruce Grove Road, for instance, their bridge is okay, but I know the bridge isn't okay, because I don't know any structural engineer that'd sign off on a wooden bridge to hold 75,000 pounds. And so it's just, you know, further like what Mike just said, you hear on all the radios when CAL FIRE gets up against a winery, you know, when they're saving graces, we're against a winery, you know? It's like, maybe not a saving grace, but it's a sign of relief when you have a fire getting pushed up against a winery. We're no different. I've had a nice conversation with some of the CAL FIRE guys, battalion chiefs, and they've told me, Chris, I'm all for the cannabis game, you know? I'm all for it. It's green, you're growing, it's almost like ag, but just because these use permits are coming across our desk as commercial, we're just reminding the county of the commercial standards. They're not responsible for signing it off on it. You guys are responsible for signing off on it. CDD is responsible to sign off on these things. They have the ultimate say. And there's other counties have taken this path already, where they're like, you know, they realize that we're pushed into rural-type areas where our road systems may not be the greatest to get to them, but there'd be no difference if I was out there growing 1,000 acres of hemp. I wouldn't have to meet these road standards potentially. It's all ag, it's not a big deal. But since everything's coming across as commercial, you have to meet these standards. And so I just wonder, are you going to go revoke? Because everyone's use permit has conditions of use, and with those conditions of use, is there road standards? Will those people get their use permits temporarily revoked while we fix this problem? Or are they going to continue to be able to operate? Or are we all going to be able to continue to operate while we figure this out? Because if we're just doing input today, it's going to be three more months potentially before we see a resolution from this.
Thank you, Chris. Chief, do you want to join us up here?
Hi. Good morning. Chief Cepeda, Lake County Fire. In regards to Old Spruce Grove, we were unaware that that was a operation. My Fire Marshal Cory Smith was invited out there to do an inspection on the alarm system. He got out there, was totally unaware this was an operation. We advised him at that point in time, we would not cross a bridge, and that road would be improved, and that bridge got to be improved and be engineered as such. Such as the ones down in Rocky Creek that 15 years ago, my predecessor had said, we won't cross that bridge. And during our Rocky Fire and numerous other fires there, in the summertime, we require CAL FIRE to put in a dozer line through there. On our typical medical emergencies that come out of Rocky Creek, we won't take an ambulance across those. So there are businesses out there that we don't know exist until we happen to get a call there or they call us here, but these bridges are critical for us, not just for the fire aspect. You have employees out there, you have rattlesnakes, you have anaphylactic reactions, you have a multitude heat-related environmental emergencies. So it's not just the fire aspects, it's the life safety as a whole. So like I said, in regards to Old Spruce Grove Road, none of us had been advised of that. But Cory took corrective actions immediately within our department and to other agencies that we will not cross that bridge until it's been engineered to fit our needs to respond there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment?
Bobby Dutcher, Kelseyville. And yeah, I agree with what Chris was saying and the way the ordinance is written and treat cannabis as just another agricultural crop, especially the comparison for hops, or hemp, excuse me, for hemp. So, you know, if someone wants to just put a couple acres of cannabis up there just because they need the use permit, if you deny it, then they could go out there and plant 100 acres of hemp and do nothing about it. It seems really unfair, especially if you'd be denying the county the measure of seat taxes and denying a business just based on the type of agriculture that they're trying to do. The whole point of this, we're trying to make, you know, cannabis is just becoming agriculture, and we need to treat it all the same. So it does seem to be an unfair standard, especially if you can do wine grapes or anything else out there. If you're growing hay, you know, if you push them into that corner, okay, we'll just grow hay. Well, hay can catch on fire. It can have spontaneous combustion. That might be an actual fire hazard. But a field of cannabis is not going to catch on fire. It's not going to add any fire danger to the area.
Eventually it will.
What's that?
Eventually it will.
Well, slowly. Yeah, slow burn.
Controlled.
Yeah, I think this is very well-written, and I would hope that you do it.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Richard Durham. I'm a cannabis farmer. During the 2015 Valley Fire, the Valley Fire actually ended up dying on my property. On my way out of the property, I had to move over and let all the fire equipment, PG&E and everybody, come up my driveway. They plowed around my cannabis farm, and then they staged right behind it, used it as a defense for them. Fortunately, the wind turned around, went 180 degrees in the opposite direction, blew the fire out. And then 10 minutes later, it rained, kind of like a miracle. But I was there, I saw the flames, I saw the trucks come up. I wasn't evacuating with other semi-trucks or any other heavy equipment. I was leaving in my own personal vehicle with my animals. I don't see that a cannabis grow isn't, you know, you're not out there with offices full of people and other things evacuated. It's usually just the cultivator, maybe one or two workers. So with that, I'll leave it alone. Thanks.
Thank you, Richard.
Lance Williams. I'm Richard's neighbor. I was the last place burned in the Valley Fire. So I did not get through. I was also the last person not to get through, from what I understand, maybe one or two. But I was not given my permit for early activation. I hope you were able to grandfather those other ones in. I will deal with however this goes down. But I do see the unfairness of how this is, because I could grow hemp, but I can't grow hemp because I'm getting shot at by cartels down there. So I won't be doing anything this year. But I really hope you guys can take care of this somehow, because there are people that have, you know, a lot on the line, and they really need to get this thing going. So I'm really glad that it was brought to the board, but I hope you come up with some decisions, and at least you can grandfather those ones that are there and give them the time. I was not aware of this. I do have a road that does need to be dealt with. It's not wide enough. And I don't know if I want the liability of a fireman going up there if something were to go wrong. So again, that's my situation. Every road is different in this county. But again, as the ones that are already through, I think you should let them go through, and then we should deal with it. Our plan is to actually have a process in place, so it looks like this won't even help me. And again, that's just the way it goes. But we have also planned to put in a large road anyways, just for that safety precaution. I think it's a bad situation. I was wondering if maybe something else could be done, because again, I'm not allowed to even put this road in until I've passed the permitting process or gone in front of the board. So if there was maybe a way to let us build these roads, what's the matter with building a fire safe road? And why do we have to stop? And why do I have to wait to do this road? I mean, I've been waiting in this process. My paperwork got lost again. So again, I'm not able to do anything. So they found my paperwork, but again, other people were able to get early activation. I wasn't. Again, I just want to build a road, just like everyone else. And anyone else who doesn't have a road that is up to standards wants to build the road. Another situation we're dealing with, because I've been working with PG a lot, is that they say they won't even come out and build a road. So in other words, my road is connected to a PG&E road. They won't do it until the fire danger. They say it was a Class III fire danger. So we're not even able to build these roads. So we're kind of in a huge catch-22, that the liability is that they said, nope, we're not going to do that road until then. So there's so many different factors. But again, they have caught the people, and they've put the stop in. There are people that, again, I think that if the fire department could go through and look at the roads to see if they're, you know, doable right now. I think a lot of those fire standards are for much larger cities in California where they have larger trucks. We have some pretty short trucks that are used to these roads and stuff. But again, I would really like you to grandfather those ones in, maybe make some special situations. I'm not going to go any further with my project until I go in front of the board. And again, I'm fine with that. And again, again, but every situation is different. There's people that have a lot on the line and might not be able to make it because they've been put to a halt. So please keep working with this as fast as you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Lance. So Mike Lynn, is somebody able to come in and get a permit to improve their roads without, I mean, is there a way to separate those two?
Yes. I'm not familiar with what he's speaking about, so I'll go upstairs and talk to staff after the meeting.
Is there any further public comment? See no movement, then I'll bring it back to the board for any more questions or comments, because this was information-only and to direct staff on what we would like to see in this resolution. Supervisor Sabatier.
I have a question for staff. At this moment in time, because of these new findings and this new understanding of the fire code, are denials for licenses that were already approved occurring?
We have not moved forward with any revocation of existing use permits, but we do have conditions in all of the use permits that all of them must meet 4290, 4291. And we have not began our compliance inspections. We will be here shortly, and we will be reviewing all of the conditions of prior use permits.
The conversation about if there's a building on there, and I think that, in my opinion, that's getting too specific versus what would you allow or not allow based on if it's truly agricultural versus what would you allow or not allow if it was just outdoor cannabis? Because to me, those two should just follow the same rules. It's the same activity. If we deem that this is okay for what you're going to do for ag, then those things should be, in my opinion, be deemed okay if you're just going to do outdoors. As soon as you start doing something where ag is going to be required to go further and do bigger permits or enhance roads or whatever, the same exact thing should happen for cannabis. I think this splitting of the hair is an issue, in my opinion. And I don't see it as a large problem. Obviously, I'll be meeting with the fire districts, and maybe I'll have a better understanding of what they have to tell me. And if we're already doing that for ag, then there's no reason why we can't do that for cannabis. But I don't believe that that's the case, and I could just be wrong, because I don't have all that information. But if there's a pre-existing building, I just don't know if that's a necessary thing, unless, of course, that's the same issue that we have with ag doing their activities.
You'll have to speak to the agriculture section.
I'm going to get a response to my question. I don't think you should be timed. If you need to take a seat so you can talk whenever you need to...
Wait a minute. So I don't know how many meetings you've been in with Willie, but there should be a timing. And an acronym limit.
You know, one of the concerns I have is, in the last 25 years dealing with meth and marijuana cultivation in the county, is that when we look at the chemicals that are associated with the normal industry, Health and Safety Code 6.95 deals with hazmat business plans at a quantity of 55 gallons or greater. On the cannabis side, there is no regulation. If you read my ordinance, even though it doesn't fall under any state reg, we require to have an inventory of those pesticides. So we look at carbamfuran, furadone, miticide. A lot of those chemicals are similar to nerve agents and kill people. Worked with the Sheriff's Department... and kill people. Worked with the Sheriff's Department of Fish and Game over the years, is that for the agricultural side of it, is that the fire districts that respond to those have those inventories, and whether it be the ag commission that regulates those, because as you are a, you run a winery, you have to have licenses and for deployment and accountability for those chemicals. And I'm not saying that the ones coming in are using illegal chemicals, but you can look at the ones that are out there that are legal still have some safety precautions for exposure, which is a cumulative, and then are carcinogen. Even when we look at where we are with Roundup, is they do pose a risk. And I can reflect back to a winery in my district that rendered 14 migrant farm workers significantly injured and impacted in my district and a mass casualty incident. So my concern is chemicals in these areas where we don't have them defined as ag or any other regulation, how do we as a responder know what's on that property to be aware of, and what we're walking into? So I just kind of wanted to add that little tidbit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Jack Smalley, interim chief billing official, is the fire code official, and he can speak more about agricultural exemptions.
So, is what I heard, though, was properties with existing buildings versus ones without the buildings. And then the agricultural use, there are exemptions for some of those things, some of those properties that, that grow only agricultural. And, and I hear you say that you want to get with the fire chiefs, and, you know, that, that's a great idea. I'd like to be there, so we can really come up with something concrete and move forward, you know, with the, something that's more consistent for everybody that's involved. And I hope we can do that really soon, actually.
Yeah, me too.
You know, so...
Can properties with existing structures qualify for the agricultural exemption, is the question?
I, I don't, I don't, I don't believe so, because of the, the structure being on there kind of classifies it as commercial. So...
Depending on what the structure is. Like if it's a, a dry shed, then that would probably qualify as agricultural.
Yeah.
I know Jack is still learning the fire codes. When I met with Mary Jane, the deputy chief billing official concerning this resolution, she's unfortunately not in the office today, she did indicate to me that yes, if there was an existing structure on the property, the agricultural exemption would not apply. And I said, well, what about the sheds that hold these chemicals? And she said, well, if the sheds are small enough that don't trigger a billing permit, which is under 200 square feet, then they wouldn't rise to a level of being classified as a structure, is what she had relayed to me. And I also indicated, well, the planning commission has been requiring restroom facilities, if restroom facilities do not exist for these cannabis use permits. And she said, well, the restroom facilities, again, are less than 200 square feet and don't rise to level. Now, I did remind her that they still will probably need a billing permit because the electrical and plumbing, but she said the structure itself wouldn't trigger the need for a billing permit. So she indicated if this resolution is approved, they would qualify for the ag exemption if there wasn't existing structure or didn't trigger a billing permit. That's what she relayed to me.
I, I appreciate that. And I'm definitely not looking for any special treatment for cannabis. I'm looking for equal treatment for the similar activity. So thank you for that.
Lance, did you have a quick question?
Well, I think something came up, and I think everyone kind of got concerned, is that the fire chief came up and said that he was worried about pesticides. And I, I think that was really good news, because he was saying he was worried about certain things, and everyone in the audience was freaking out, because we're not allowed to use pesticides. And we don't have the same things that he was worried about. We have to have the MSDS on-site. So the things that he brought up, actually, our industry regulates. So I just wanted to bring that up, that, again, his concerns, again, that's not in our industry. And again, it's the safest situation. We won't have any workers poisoned. Again, I think he might have to do some researches here, or spend some time with some of us. But again, we're tested at one parts per billion. There is no chemicals there that he has to worry about. So I just wanted to bring that up. His concerns, again, don't seem to be valid in this case. Thank you.
And if I just may add to that, I think that if you already have an MSDS, maybe that's something we should add in our policy, that that needs to be shared, because I think that would be good information for fire districts to have, if that's not already shared. And also, some of the, I know, I think it's the carbamfuron is the one that's really, really horrible, somewhat new that has been found. Yeah, that's been found in a lot of illicit grows in the area. And unfortunately, there may always be some bad actors, whether they're growing hemp, or growing a vineyard, or growing cannabis, trying to go the legal route. But hopefully, we can minimize those bad actors and get rid of those, and eventually have people who are going to be following our rules. But if we can add the, the sharing of whatever list of chemicals they might be using, the MSDS, I think that would be something that would be of valuable use, and again, part of our conversation that we'll have.
I'd like just to make a comment on that. So we include conditions that either it's the agricultural commissioner or environmental health that regulates the storage of those type of chemicals. So they're the ones that would require all of that documentation information. So we do include a condition, so those agencies would have that detailed information.
Public comment?
I think Mike Lynn just said it. I just wanted to...
If you could state your name first.
Noah Cornell, Upper Lake, thank you very much. Just wanted to reaffirm that hazardous waste concerns are regulated through the environmental health department, and our site has a EPA ID number. Everything's been reported, and it's ongoing, logged. So any, between binder full of MSDS sheets, so on and so forth, it is, it is on record and continuously updated with the county. Yeah.
Okay. Is there any further questions or comments from the board? And so I think it looks like Supervisor Simon.
You know, I do want to thank Bruno for bringing this out here, to get it to the fire departments, to the board here, so we can have these discussions. The ultimate intention, I, ultimately, is to establish this industry in the best way that we can, and making sure that these permits, the, the commercial operations are done in the right way. And I, I just hope that we can all work together in creating an opportunity that is going to help establish this industry, instead of revoking permits and all these types of things. We already know that there are a lot of illegal grows out there that are happening this year. The RV report it and other things. But the folks that have come here and worked through this, both the county, the fire department, the board here, that have made decisions to back up the vote that the voters take, took on 64 here to establish cannabis industry across the state of California, we can keep moving forward and get that accomplished here. I know there are challenges that have come up on every step of the way for this industry, and I still think we're in the transition to really get it established. So hopefully, everybody continue to have these meetings as soon as possible to get this established. Because it is, it's tough to be out there trying to do the right thing, getting your, you know, business started up. It is growing season at this point, we've seen it around the county, and hopefully, these folks that are doing the right things, we can get them the support and the opportunities that they need to be treated equally across the board, and make sure it's established here in Lake County, like we intended as a board, which we voted on.
Okay, so then I'm looking for consensus from the board. Do we want Supervisor Sabatier to continue working on this with the chiefs and with staff?
Yes.
I'd like to invite Supervisor Simon to join me in these conversations, if possible.
Just as a suggestion, if, if we identified two people from the board, and the fire chiefs, and maybe one or two representatives from the, the growers, to pick a date now, so that it doesn't fall by the wayside, I think that might be the answer.
And staff.
And staff.
And staff, absolutely, staff.
So it looks like Supervisor Simon's on board to sit on this committee?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and since we don't have all of staff's calendars right in front of us, we'll go ahead and send out emails right away after this meeting, and we'll go ahead and make sure that by the end of this week, we have something set so that we can meet. And I, I really believe that in one good meeting, that we should be able to hammer out how to, how to deal with this in a safe manner, and to continue the, the process that we want to create. But again, to make sure that the communities are, are safe. So we'll, we'll make sure, and I'll, I'll make sure and send out the email to invite to that meeting as soon as possible, before the day's over.
Anything further?
The only thing is, I'm, I'm open to having the meetings in the afternoons, if we can do that. If that'll work out with everybody, that would be great. But I will definitely make myself available as soon as possible to sit down and have a conversation.
Anything further? Okay, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to move on to our 7.5. Todd, if you can come up and join us. Consideration of A, waiving the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 3.2, as it is not public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services, and B, approval of the agreement between County of Lake and Crestwood Behavioral Health for Adult Residential Support and Specialty Mental Health Services for fiscal year 2019-20 for a contract maximum of $800,000, and authorize the Board of Supervisors Chair to sign the agreement. Todd?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Todd Metcalf. I'm the administrator of Lake County Behavioral Health Services. What is before you today is one of those contracts that you hear me talk a lot about, where we are sending our clients off out of county to, to receive specialty mental health services, rehabilitation services, skilled nursing services that are not available at all in this county, let alone even some of our neighboring counties. So further to that, you've heard me talk about bringing people back into the, into the county, and creating some sort of transitional housing for these folks. Supervisor Crandall mentioned earlier his, his calendar, that he's meeting with someone over in Lucerne, to talk about something along those lines. And I've also had communication with that particular individual as well. I'm hoping that once, once I get a permanent housing, a permanent supportive housing project in the works, that, that then our department can move forward to looking at some sort of a facility that does provide the services that are, that are explained in this contract with Crestwood Behavioral Health. We've also recently put together a new team at Behavioral Health Services, a discharge planning team. All of our clients that are at Crestwood Behavioral Health do have a discharge plan. Unfortunately, I don't think they, those have been looked at for quite some time by our staff. So we've created a, a team effective July 1st, that will start really digging into why are our clients at these facilities, and how can we step them down and bring them back to the county? I've got some statistics here, I don't know if you're interested. At Crestwood, right now, we have a total of 16 clients placed at numerous facilities throughout the state. Nine of them are in what we call a mental health rehabilitation center. Most of those clients are currently under LPS conservatorship, so they've been there for quite some time, which is another reason that I want to renew this contract, because if we were to move these clients somewhere else, it, it wouldn't, it would be detrimental to their care. We also have six clients in skilled nursing facilities at the various Crestwood locations, and a couple in enhanced board and care, which the board and care piece is what I'm looking at trying to bring to this county, that is a, an, I should say, unlocked facility that would serve these folks to transition them back into society, because that's really what the goal and purpose of Behavioral Health Services is. So with that, I'm not sure if you guys have any questions about this contract. But again, you've heard me probably talk ad nauseam about these, these types of contracts that we have to enter into, because the services just don't exist here. So I'm asking now that the board chair will go forward and sign this agreement, so we can keep these folks being served. I was waiting for that.
Supervisor Sabatier.
So, two questions. One, I think that you already answered, is in the memo, it talks about geared toward community reintegration. Do we have any idea what their success rate in community integration? I know you said the outcome reports have been dismal, or...
Yes, yes.
So do, do you have any idea, or no?
Well, of the 16 folks, and I'm just speaking to this contract that are placed at Crestwood Behavioral Health, we did place six this last fiscal year, and three were discharged, back to the county. That's a fairly good success rate. Of course, I'd like to see it higher. But as you all know, housing is a major issue in this county, and so we're trying to be as creative as possible. I'm hopeful, no pun intended, about the Hope Center Transitional Housing Project. We just held a Mental Health Services Act stakeholder meeting a week or so ago, and there was discussion about housing. And we are looking at, hopefully, maybe finding monies from Mental Health Services Act that could go towards the Hope Center project, because that, with this, is a, is a pivotal piece to my, my, I shouldn't say my, our department's permanent supportive housing projects that we're talking about. But we definitely transitional housing, but it would offset the need for these types of $800,000 contracts that we want to keep the money here within the county.
And I appreciate that. And my last question is, when I looked it up, it's in either Vallejo or Sacramento that Crestwood has these facilities?
Also in Eureka, Stockton, and Modesto. So we've got folks all over the place.
And so that's fairly far, traveling time. How, how do they get to those facilities? Do you provide the...
We, we transport them there, and then, of course, we go see them as often as we can. But as you've heard me say before, these folks that are in these facilities, you know, their family and friends here in this county can't go visit them, they can't, they can't see them. And so all the more reason I really want to bring these folks back, so that they can, they'll receive services as well. But also, you know, if they are with family and friends, that they would, they would respond better to treatment.
And, and another follow-up, and sorry, it's not necessarily specific to the contract, it's more an understanding. You said we go visit them as often as you can. Those visits are done by your staff, not the Crestwood staff.
Correct.
So the cost of the visits are not accounted for in this contract.
It's not in this contract, no.
So in addition to the contract, it's also costing us by having these contracts outside of our area. That's what I wanted to get to. Okay.
Yeah, that was a good question. And I'll be sure to pull those numbers together for you as well.
They're substantial. We've, we've had this conversation many, for many years, and it's always been an issue. It's always been a concern that we've had, these long-distance placement.
And it's time. I mean, and I, as, as I move forward with whatever this, this housing project will look like, aside from permanent supportive housing, I, I will be calling on, on you guys to, to help, because it's a need. And, and in tying into the Vision 2028 Strategic Plan and, and talk of economic development, this could be a, a key component of that. And yeah, it's a long-term goal of, of my department, but it's, it's something that is needed. And we could bring in business from neighboring counties, because they don't have these facilities either.
Right. And, and you're not, you're not looking for homes, you're looking for facilities where there's oversight, making sure they're taking their meds, or making sure that they're eating whatever, everything in life is being handled. So it's not just about finding a, a nonprofit with a home that can offer you this.
Correct. And it would not be a locked facility.
Right, right, right. That's where it gets difficult.
Yeah.
Is there any more questions?
Yeah, so I was just going to add to that, and I, and I, I agree with you. The hardest part is, you know, they come back to this environment where they've pretty much committed a lot of this, what, what put them in that position. And so when they don't have a place here to heal at, it just goes back to the regression of the norm. So if you have a facility like you're talking about, they'll be able to practice that in county, with family, around. You're jumping like right back into where you, you know, you can't heal where you got sick, if that makes sense. So having facilities of the such that you're mentioning is going to be a big attribute to helping people get better. So in the meantime, but in the meantime, we have to continue at least the care for the people.
Right, right.
Any further questions or comments for Todd? Is there any public comment on this item? See no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for action. Looks like we have two actions.
Madam Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2.
Second.
And motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake, Lake and Crestwood Behavioral Health for Adult Residential Support and Specialty Mental Health Services for Fiscal Year 1920, for a contract maximum of $800,000, and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement.
Say.
And motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to move on to our 7.6 item, consideration of amendment to the Deputy Register of Voters Class specification. Catherine, if you'd like to come join us.
Thank you, Chair Scott.
If you want to brief us on this?
Sure.
Information you'd like us to have, and for the public?
So, thank you for allowing me to address the board. As you all know, I started here on June 24th, and I've been focusing on some of the priorities of the Office of the Register of Voters. As you know, the office is in a period of transition, and one of the most important things for me, I think, for us to be successful, is to build a strong ROV team or staff there. And so, right now, we have myself, an interim deputy register of voters, an elections assistant, too, and then an extra help worker covering for an open elections assistant position. So right now, we're about 50% permanently staffed. And so this position change allows me to open the recruitment and get a sufficient pool of applicants to be able to hire a permanent deputy register of voters.
Any questions for Catherine, or comments? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? Okay, see no movement, I'll bring it back to the board.
Before I make a motion... Before I make a motion?
Supervisor Sabatier?
Before I make a motion, I just want to say thank you very much for the invite to come and talk to you about this item. I enjoyed your perspective on increasing the pool to make it more accessible to our community members to be a part of the Register of Voters team, and I really liked that phrasing of it, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I am going to find it. Where are we?
7.6.
I move to approve the amendment to the Deputy Register of Voters Class specification.
Second.
And motion of second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
All right, 7.4. Greg, if you want to come join us while I read this. Consideration of A, Lake County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee recommendations for developing new premiums for the Lake County Fair book in the amount of $360 annually. And the Lake County B, Lake County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee recommendations to support Lake County Department of Water Resources to design, develop, and distribute drainage signs in the amount of $9,234.
Thank you for doing my job for me. Greg Juicy, Chair of your Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee. Before I get to those two items, let me give you an update on something the last time I talked to you about was the Osprey panels that were being prepared for Lake County, or excuse me, Lakeside County Park in Kelseyville. Those panels have been completed, one in English and one in Spanish, and Marilyn Waite is working with your staff to come before you, to show you, to give you the examples, actually show you what the panels look like. I think she's going to come before you in a week or so, and then there'll be a dedication, I think, at the end of the month, but I've seen them, I think you'll be pleased. They turned out really nice. To the business at hand, the Lake County Fair has approached the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee in the hopes of securing funding, about $360 a year, to add premiums in the fine arts category in their premium book that would recognize local efforts at wildlife photography, native plant design, and perhaps even fly tying, fly fish tying. But again, to expand the use of and the appreciation of natural resources of Lake County and highlight them in the fair with the county being recognized as the sponsors of these premiums. Your committee felt that it was a great way, again, to increase awareness, to increase participation and appreciation of natural resources, and we suggest to you in a unanimous vote that you consider allowing $360 a year of our funds, your funds, to be used to support the Lake County Fair Premium Book.
Okay, is there any questions for Greg? Any questions or comments from the public? And then I'm a miss, I should have maybe invited Stephen. Did you want to come? No, okay. Making sure. Cover my bases. Okay, seeing no movement from the public, then do you want to go ahead and?
I can do both if you want. Okay, I'm sure, whatever you want, Madam Chair. The second advice, I guess is what we come to and provide you advice, that's our role, is an ambitious plan by the Lake County Water Resources Department, and as you know, anything that involves Lake, Clear Lake, requires an ambitious plan. Everything that requires an ambitious plan. The department is requesting the $9,234 to put as many as 450 drain markers throughout the county, alerting people to storm drains, particularly as it relates to water quality and storm drain management, of waters that enter creeks, marshes, and the lake to minimize the chance of pollutants getting in that water. And these aren't just the standard plain metal placards that you see maybe in other examples, but these are actually very attractive pieces of art that might have things like frogs and fish and waterfowl to catch people's eyes, and for the most part, they say no dumping drains to lake, or no dumping drains to wetlands, or no dumping drains to creeks. The other part that intrigued us, and I want to give, I want to give props to Angela DePalma because she put this together and just did a fabulous job with an extensive budget on what was involved, but also to couple this drain marker program with an outreach and educational programs that would involve public service announcements and radio, using the local paper, using digital media, creating an informational brochure designed with high-impact imagery to get out to schools, to other members of the public conservation organizations, but really a comprehensive approach to increasing awareness and providing educational materials, all aimed at improving water quality going into Clear Lake, but also other waters outside the drainage. So, this really, it really is a Herculean effort, but it's certainly something that your committee thought was a fabulous idea, and we bring that forward again with a unanimous vote suggesting that you approve this project.
Okay, so any questions or comments for Greg? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? Supervisor Sabatier?
I do have a question. Would it only be on the bordering the shores of Clear Lake, or would it also be on some of the creeks feeding into Clear Lake?
I'm going to ask Angela for specifics on that because she has other places marked here, and I want to make sure that I don't misspeak.
Yeah, thanks. I'm Angela, basis species coordinator for water resources. Thanks, Greg. That was a great description and presentation of what we're doing. So, to answer your question, we actually just completed a trash assessment with the cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport, and this was a state requirement, but it really helped us identify areas in the county where there's pedestrian traffic and where there's trash at the highest, and so we'll start with those areas as priorities. They're all within the growth boundaries, they're the MS4 boundaries, so the cities and then the areas of the county. And then from there, we'll go out to places where there's direct connections to creeks and streams and sensitive areas. Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Because I don't believe we had any notes and maps, so that's why I had to ask.
Yeah, and that's also part of this project. We put in there some funding and support to track what we're doing, so that was one thing is actually this type of project started maybe five, 10 years ago by dedicated group of volunteers and the Clean Water Program that actually started putting some drainage markers, and you'll see some here in Lakeport, and you'll see some in Clear Lake. Some of them are faded. We don't know where they are, we don't know if they've been maintained, and so part of this project too is also to, where did we put that out on the landscape? Can we track it? How often do we have to maintain it? And then what kind of outreach do we put out? Is it being effective? Is it useful? And that's to help us sustain this program and to constantly maintain our stormwater system along with the education to go along with that and the awareness.
You mentioned tracking. Is there anything on the sign that might allow somebody, I don't know, like a QR code that might lead somebody to further information, to like a website or something linked to this?
There's not because they're standard signs, and we want to make sure that the no dumping leads to, you know, your wetland or creek or stream is very prominent, and they're on the ground, they're going to be, you know, they might get dirty, but all of the outreach materials, yes, we'll have QR code and options for how to contact the information or how you can be involved, and yeah, so that'll be addressed through those materials.
Okay, but they're standard signs with frogs?
And birds.
Frogs, yeah, fish, birds, yeah. Charismatic species.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
No.
Seeing none, then I'm looking for action. I have two.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the proposed, the two recommendations proposed by the Lake County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And again, thank you for always supporting your committee and being positive on these. We really do appreciate it, and obviously, we only bring you things that we think are worthy for your consideration, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I needed that motion covered both. Making sure. All right, with that, we are going to move to our 7.7 item, consideration of award a bid for three SB1 rehabilitation improvement projects, bid number 19-10 to Granite Construction in the amount of $566,052 and 25 cents, and authorize the Chair to execute a notice of award and the agreement. Scott?
Good morning. Scott DeLeon, Public Works Director. Pretty excited about this project. It's the first of hopefully many SB1-funded projects. We identified three segments of road here in the Lakeport area that are in desperate need of repair. They're all on high-volume locations. They're at the intersection of Highway 175, South Main Street, Sota Bay Road. The state went in last year and did a nice overlay project and really made our section of road look, I mean, it's just really, really bad. So, these, the three locations, there's another site down on Sota Bay Road, and then the intersection of 11th Street and Highway 29, even though that's underneath the state highway, that's the county maintenance responsibility for that portion of road. Probably some of the highest volumes of traffic in the county, so it's all going to be nighttime construction, so unique construction. We put them all together in one package, and we had four bids on the project, and Granite Construction of Ukiah was the low bidder. I've attached the bid tabulation for your information to the memo. Project will result in the rehabilitation of the existing pavement surface and clean, performing digouts on any portion that's been failed, or any portion of the road that's been failed, and then a hot mix asphalt overlay with signs and stripe, or stripe and markings. With that, we recommend that your board award the contract to Granite Construction in the amount of $566,052 and 25 cents.
Is there any questions for Scott? Nope. Any questions or comments from the public on this item? Seeing no movement, then I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the award of bid for the three SB1 rehabilitation improvement projects, bid number 1910 to Granite Construction in the amount of $566,052 and 25 cents, and authorize the Chair to execute the notice for award and the agreement.
Second.
I have a motion of second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 7.8, consideration of the award of bid for the FEMA FMAG culvert replacement number one and number two project, bid number 19-01 to Coleman Environmental Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $649,497 and 50 cents, and authorize the Chair to sign notice of award and execute contract. Scott?
Thank you. This is a project that's been a long time in the making. Following the valley fire, some hazard mitigation money was made available, and we applied for it to upsize some culverts, and you would think that that would not present a number of issues, seemed like a pretty straightforward project. Turns out, they aren't. You know, a lot of the culverts that we have have minimum amount of cover, so in order to make the culvert larger, you've got to go deeper into the ground, which you're now excavating into native material that's, you know, undisturbed, and it triggers a number of environmental issues. And of course, most every regulatory agency from the states and the state and the feds want a piece of that because they're going to get a little money for applications and permits, so it's been a difficult project frankly to deliver. I'm pleased to be here today to finally get it done, and so this project, what we did is we combined a couple of programs together. You'll see replacement one and two. We actually have a third one that will come out next year. So, we did, we, staff did take advantage of the funding that was available. It's just taken us a little bit to deliver the project. A lot of interest in this project. We had nine bids, and we were pleased to award the project to a local contractor, Coleman Environmental. We've worked with them in the past and look forward to working with them again on this project.
Okay, is there any questions for Scott? Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I was surprised at the range of the bids. I think one of them was a million dollars versus this 650. That's quite a huge difference. If you don't mind, I just want to correct something that you just said since it's on the public airwaves. It's not that this project came up with environmental issues, it pushed new environmental policies, processes to be dealt with because it's not an issue. It's just that you have to do the review and the research and get all that stuff done.
It, fair enough, yes. It triggered, it triggered by disturbing previously undisturbed soil, that triggers environmental review.
Right.
And whereas if you were just replacing in kind, and, but we couldn't because of elevation constraints and minimum cover requirements, we had to, in a lot of cases, had to go deeper with the culvert. So, that new ground, that undisturbed soil is what triggered the environmental review.
Right, and that takes time.
Yep.
Thank you very much for bringing this to us.
Are there questions for Scott? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? Seeing no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam, go ahead. Madam Chair, I'll motion to approve the award of bid for the FEMA FMAG culvert replacement number one and number two project, bid number 19-01 to Coleman Environmental Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $649,497, $649,497,050, and authorize the Chair to sign the notice of award and execute the contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
Madam Chair, Gary Buckholz couldn't be here earlier, but he's back and still hoping to speak to you under public input as he originally scheduled.
Do we need to have a motion to open public input?
We can just take it back up.
Okay, we're just going to take public input back up. Gary, was it Gary?
Thank you very much, and I apologize for not being here earlier.
Not a problem.
I'm here because I live on Highland Springs Road, and we're having a problem out there that has been increasing over the years. I've lived in the same house for 26 years, and when I first moved out there, there were some traffic issues, actually, our first night in that home, I was with the sheriff's office at that time and helped arrest a guy that ran into the tree across the road. But since then, the problem has been getting, and there's a petition that's been provided to the, I guess it's been provided to you folks.
Yes, we have.
And I can't address all of those things, but I'm only going to talk about that corner right there. And first of all, I'd like to tell you that I've been, I've got nothing but good cooperation from DPW. They've come out and put up some new signage. It usually lasts a month or so before it's run over, but the seriousness of the accidents are so frequent, and most recently, two young girls, both of them I think were 17 years old, lost control on that corner. I'm exactly 3.5, 3.6 miles out from the highway, Highway 29, lost control, hit a tree, very seriously injured. I personally was chasing a car about, or motorcycle actually, about 50 years ago who ran off that road and was killed when I was still with the sheriff's department. Having been with the sheriff's department here for over 30 years, the last half of it being admitted in upper level management, I know that there's not money to really fix this right. I know that, and I'm not here asking for that, but something needs to be done. I don't know about Daley, I know this petition says Daley. Well, I still work, I just don't work in Lake County anymore, but I'm still involved in law enforcement in Napa County, and so I'm here during, not here during the week, but I can tell you without any hesitation or reservation that every weekend, particularly on Sundays, somebody loses it on that corner. Probably 90% of it are able to regain control to the extent that they don't hit anything, but the other 5 to 10% run off the road or run into other cars every weekend when the weather's nice heading out there. DPW tells me that they get the reports on that. Most of them are unlicensed drivers, and that's all the information I have, but I can tell you that I've, twice, people have damaged my property once pretty seriously, and of course, they were uninsured, took out 24 feet of my fence and two brick posts, overturned vehicle with teenage kids in it. I do know that also that the drinking in the park does not help, absolutely does not help, and that corner sneaks up on people, and I am not exaggerating. Everybody will tell you that, and in my career, every place I went, people were complaining about people driving too fast by their house, and that's probably true, they do, but the speeds that they're hitting that corner literally are sometimes 60 miles an hour, and you cannot control that car. The roads narrow there, they're, in fact, I'm doing, I'm going to be doing my part this weekend. We have oleander bushes going all the way around. It's not going to help much, but maybe it'll be a feel-better thing. I'm going to trim those back to virtually nothing. That process has already started, but something more needs to be done. I've made several suggestions to DPW, including the fact that I'll be happy to pay for it out of my own pocket, to, you know, getting some lighting system in there that's solar operated, and the neighbors are willing to pitch in as well. But this is getting to the point where we're going to, we've had tragedies already, but most recently, these two 17-year-old girls, but people are going to be killed. DPW also told me that they were aware of two deaths on that corner somewhere around 20 or 25 years ago. I do not recall those, and I've been there 26 years, but it's certainly possible that it did happen. But I can absolutely unequivocally, with every degree of certainty, tell you, there are, people will die on that corner. Thank you very much for listening to me. I appreciate it.
I'll be in contact with you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our 7.3 item, consideration of the following appointments, Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council. 7.3, and she actually, I know it's staked on here that she's a new member, but she's actually been sitting on, she let her application lapse, Carol Ward. I would like to see her be approved, so if somebody could do that. So any questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Carol Ward's application to the Scotts Valley Advisory Board.
It does say she's requesting reappointment, so.
Oh, does it say reappointment? I thought it's a new, it says new application.
And the third line says requesting reappointment. My second.
I have a motion of second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. With that, I think we've taken up all our open session items, so we'll go into closed session. First, I will read, closed session, 8.1, Public Employee Evaluations, title Special District Administrator, Public Services Director. 8.2, Conference with Legal Counsel, Assisting Litigation Pursuant to Governance Code, Section 54956.9D1, Drake vs. Kennedy et al. 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Governance Code, Section 54956.9D2E3, California River Watch. With that, we're in closed session.
Madam Chair, I should say that as to 8.3, I'm asking to put that over until next Tuesday on the 13th.
Okay. That we're in closed.